It is so crystal clear on this screen.
We're almost done. Objection on that. Oh wait. One piece of something. A bunch of little ballerinas over the building. Go around the corner, they're all around glass and they're just kind of cute. You know, there's like forty little girls in there. Just try to get them to do it all upset.
Yeah, they got some water leaks at their other building.
I heard they had an old, it's another issue that they're discussing problems, yeah.
Yeah, so they've been there for a year.
Have they?
Where it goes.
Good, good. No, are they gonna be putting screens up on the windows or are they gonna?
No, I thought they could.
Good.
So we'll, we'll see how.
Yeah, it's, it's not a problem. This is, was, I go like, oh, cool.
Sometimes it is a problem.
Is it?
Yeah, there's a couple.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised.
Couple people down town that.
Yeah.
Take advantage of it.
Yeah. Good point. There's a, there's obviously across the street.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I think it's cute when you drive down, see them all dancing.
It is. Yeah, it's great. All right. All right, let's get started.
All right, I am Chair of the State Planning Commission, Larry McKinley. I'm calling this September 30th Planning Commission meeting for the City of State into order. First, I'd like to do a roll call quickly. We'll have the Commissioner, starting with Dixie on my right.
Dixie Eller here.
Richard Lewis.
Pete Ballas.
All right, and is Amy online yet or not? Okay, we do have a quorum, so we can, we can move forward. There are three land use issues before the commission tonight. One is a continuation of a hearing on the application for preliminary partition of the property at 313 North Evergreen, which we addressed two months ago and had a continuation last month, and we are holding a hearing on that decision tonight for land use. The second is a land use hearing on amendment to the interchange development zone to allow general merchandising. And last month, we made a decision not to forward that, to not make a decision on that and leave it as is. City has asked us to put that and document that in writing. So tonight, we will hold a hearing, document that decision with a vote, and then I will sign that and we'll go forward. The third hearing is a, for a continuation of the application for site plan review. We had a continuation for that last month. That hearing has reached the ninety, the ninety days it's allowed. It's gonna cross over the ninety days allowed for land use decision. And they are requesting, hundred and twenty days, hundred and twenty days, hundred and twenty days. And they are requesting, the attorneys are requesting an extension out to at least, to no more than two hundred and forty-five days on that. So that's the three hearings we have before us tonight. So with that said, I would like to go ahead and open the land use, or continue the land use hearing for file number three dash zero one slash two four, an application for preliminary partition plan, divide 313 North Evergreen Avenue located in medium density residential zone. But before we do that, let's go to the minutes. I forgot to prove the minutes. Anybody have any comments on the minutes from last month? Motion to approve?
motion.
Second?
I'll say it.
Okay. All by saying aye. And that carries. Now, back to the land use hearing. So at this time, is there additional applicant presentation?
No.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Do we remember, are you?
Well, we were, the, the applicant was trying to work out some concessions with the city over what things. Has that made any progress?
Yes.
Yes, it has. So there were, there was a condition about the non-remonstrative agreement, and we rewarded it to say that if a improvement was required, that we will make the non-remonstrative agreement say that of only, it would only be in effect if a full right-of-way was redone. So if the whole street was redone, so that they're not on the hook for just doing part of the street. So that was one of the things. The other thing was the width of the sidewalk. The Public Works Director has the ability to waive that. So we left it in more vague in the conditions to allow the Public Works Director to make it a little bit smaller. And if you remember, on North Evergreen, they have a fence, and they didn't want it a full six feet. They wanted it about fifty-seven feet. So it's, I mean, it's fifty-seven inches, which is close to six feet. And the, the house right across the street was given a waiver to have a smaller side, sidewalk as well. So we felt like that was justifiable, the fact that there's already two existing houses there. The other one was the right-of-way area that we agreed to take the right-of-way area for them to dedicate it to us because it would, it would involve too much. It would end up being a little bit more complicated when the time would come when we'd upgrade the road. And also, I made the point that the public utilities is ten feet after the right-of-way. So it would be confusing where exactly the public utilities would go in if you had like this flexible area for public right-of-way. So those were the things that we negotiated or, and, and we negotiated them because there's already existing houses on there. You know, it's not a full development, so. And Levi, the applicant's engineer, is online. He can answer any questions, and Julie is here too as well.
Was there one other issue with the width of the sidewalk that goes along Ida? That they wanted to match it to that, what the existing houses are as well?
Um, yes. So we, we made it flexible for them to, to work with Public Works.
With both Evergreen and?
And Ida, yes. Instead of putting a fixed amount, we said per, per discretion of Public Works.
Very good. Okay, any other questions from the commission?
So we're just, is this ready to go?
It is ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so Ross can be here tonight, but Levi and, and I, and I said, Julie, you should probably come just in case, so that they know that what I'm saying is right.
All right. Any other questions from the commission?
Thank you.
All right, very good. So I'm assuming there's not an applicant summary, that there were no starting points? Is there, after everything you've said?
Yeah, does Levi want to speak at all?
No, I'm good.
He's, said he's good.
Okay. Is there any additional staff summary? After?
No.
Just gave. Okay, very good. If that's the case, we will close the hearing at this time. And I will open up deliberation from the commission. So based on what I'm seeing, we have the city and the applicant have come to an agreement on what the points of conflict were with the initial application and the city. I think at this point, I mean, I've been watching the improvements on the lot. I compliment you on the improvements on the house on the corner of Ida and Evergreen. That's a huge improvement. And I think this will benefit that lot and make it a much more usable space. Any other comments from people beyond the commission? If that's the case, then I would entertain a motion.
My motion that we approve, I'm sorry. I motion that we approve the plan. That's, what is, where's my, thank you. I move State and Planning Commission approve the application for a preliminary plan for Cardboard Box LLC and Ross Bosher, Boshler, for 313 North Evergreen Avenue, land use file number three oh one slash twenty-four, and adopt the draft order presented by staff.
Is there a second? Dixie Lynn seconded that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. This hearing is, so the commission's decision may be appealed to the City of State Council within fourteen days of the mailing of the notice of decision in accordance. And at that point, I'm going to close this hearing. All right. So the second hearing today is on the us documenting the decision we made last month regarding to amendment to the interchange development zone. So, good evening. My name is Larry McKinley. I am the chairperson of the State and Planning Commission. I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file nine dash zero eight slash two four, a legislative amendment to permit use with site plan review, general merchandise stores in the interchange development zone. This hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those tenants that cover certain matters relative to this case. That statement, with all the information required to be presented under ORS 197 dot seven nine seven Bowleg five, is printed and available at the back counter. If you have not yet received one of these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes to your turn to speak during the hearing. Also at the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called to speak during the public hearing. The Planning Commission's rules, procedures for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You are encouraged to attain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would like to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent out in this case. Hearing none to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. Hearing none. Are there any declarations of conflict or interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of this body? I hear none. We are now ready for the staff introduction and report.
Okay, um, so due to procedural issues, a public hearing for the proposed text will take place on today. The Planning Commission is to provide a written recommendation either for or against the proposal. I wrote up one against the proposal because that's what you pretty much decided last, at the last meeting. We just wanted it in writing. I just want to mention that I did receive a call of a resident who did not like the idea of general merchandise in this area. And I also had an email come to me, I could, which I included in your staff report. It's Staff Hayden. I won't say her address. I don't know if I should just read it. Turner, Amesville, Mill City, Salem, Silverton, Jefferson are all towns that have Dollar General stores which surround the city of Staton. There are over a hundred Dollar General stores in Oregon. Dollar General has a distribu- distribution center close to I five. This really helps Dollar General in its expansion. Usually Dollar General stores are places in economic depressed areas. Is Staton an economically depressed area? Does Staton have businesses that would be hurt by having a Dollar General? Staton has prided itself with improving the downtown business area by having a Dollar General store. Staton would be willing to stop growth in the downtown. Is that what the city of Staton really wants? Let Staton have quality and not quantity. The city of Staton should be concerned about its business community and not jump into the business, which would degrade the city. Please vote against this idea. And that's, that's.
All right. So it's time for questions from the commission. I guess I would like to make a point that this hearing is not addressing a Dollar General store. This hearing is only addressing an amendment to the interchange development zoning criteria to add general merchandising as a eligible applicant to that, that zone. All right, is there any discussion or questions, I should say, from the commission? Hearing none. Anything, any questions from the public? Testimony from the public other than that email statement? Hearing none. Staff summary?
Yeah, I would like to read the findings of fact that I, that I wrote down as part of the recommendation for denial. So we are all on the same page. So I said, the parcels in the interchange zone are part of the sublimity interchange area management adopted in November two thousand and six, and the uses in the interchange development area need careful consideration due to its proximity to the interchange. Two, the city desires to have land developed in a manner that promotes health, safety, peace, comfort, convenience, economic well-being, and general welfare of the city of Staton. Three, the Staton Comprehensive Plan EC four states, it is the policy of the city to discourage commercial development at Highway twenty-two. Four, the action item under policy EC four states that the city shall continue the interchange development zone near the two Highway twenty-two interchanges to limit commercial uses to travel oriented. Five, the State and Planning Commission has determined that the number seventeen general merchandise use is not travel oriented. Those.
Thank you, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the hearing. And is there any deliberation from commission members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There are three reasons I don't support this amendment. One, a general merchandise store is not compatible with the interchange zone concept and which is outlined by the Director of Community and Economic Development. Two, the proposed increase in the size of the building, whether eight thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet, as a most direct entrance to our city, warehouse-sized store located within the general merchandise, located with general merchandise, would be the most visible attraction from the other businesses in this zone, which were built pursuant to the interchange zone requirement. Three, land is bought and sold. Buildings go down and new buildings go up. This proposed addition would significantly change what's allowed to go up in the future, both in businesses, ventures, and building sizes.
Thank you. Thank you. Other discussion? So I think the key to remember is the interchange development zone was zoned that way so that anyone driving up and down Highway twenty-two, that was a view shed, that would attract people in to the state community. And so that's why there's things like restaurants and a bank and things like gas station. It pulls people off the highway that might be just transiting back and forth to come into our area and spend money. And I agree, I don't know that a Dollar General meets that, meets that requirement. So if there's no more deliberation, hearing none. So I would accept the motion to put into writing what we have.
Recommend to the City Council that the general merchandise stores you should not be added to table seventeen point sixteen point oh seven oh point one, for planned use of the interchange development ID zone. Adopting the draft order as presented, I move the State and Planning Commission recommend to the City Council land is not be amended to allow number seventeen general merchandise use in the interchange development ID zone. And I'm giving the draft order presented by staff.
Is there a second? Commissioner Lund seconded that. All in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carries. Hearing is hearing is closed. We're closing the hearing. Now, just a general statement on that. The next issue, item that we're going to consider is a continuation to the site plan review for a Dollar General. And so today, before, I should just get into the hearing, I guess. The big part of it is the continuation is being requested to do that, so I'll just, I'll just move into that. Oh, I got it. Okay. So good evening. My name is Larry McKinley. I am the chairperson of the State and Planning Commission, and I will be continuing the public hearing in the matter of land use file number ten zero six slash twenty-four, an application for a site review to develop a vacant lot at one zero one Whitney Street, an interchange development zone into a ten thousand six hundred and sixty-four, six hundred and forty square foot commercial building for a proposed Dollar General, including parking access and landscaping. All right, so any staff introduction on that?
Sure. So I, they hired, Dollar General hired an attorney in Oregon to, and they asked, and their attorney asked for a continuance on this site plan review, and I think that that is understandable, not knowing if it could actually be in that zone. So I think that that's what should be done.
Okay. Is there applicant? Not hearing one. Questions from the commission? I guess what, the way I look at this is if we were to not approve this, and they were to take it to City Council, and City Council were to say, Planning Commission, consider this, and we closed it, then the whole process would have to start over again with notifying associate property owners and everybody else, all the administrative things. The smart move on the commission would be to continue this hearing, depending on if the decision is even taken to the City Council, which I don't know if it will or won't be. But that way, it's the most, you know, good use of manpower to continue this hearing based on any pending outcome decisions from the City Council. Any questions on that? Nope? Okay, all right. All right. So if there's no other questions from the commission, questions from the public? I don't think so. Applicant summary? Not here. Staff summary?
Nothing else.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to close the hearing. Is there any other deliberation from the commission? Oh, excuse me. No, we're not. Staff summary, then we close the hearing. And then we start the discussion.
Oh, you don't want to close it. You want to keep it open.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Thank you very much for that. So.
Keep it open.
We are going, is there, we need a recommendation to?
Need a motion.
A motion to continue, to allow this to continue. Okay, so the motion was made by Commissioner Lund to continue, keep it open, and seconded by Richard. So any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to continue carries. That said, that is the business for this evening.
Yes.
Anything else from the, from planning?
There is. I have one thing that I wanted to hand out to you. The planning department is working on a downtown core parking study. So this is for anybody who goes in the downtown core and parks, either residents, building owners, business owners, and customers. So I'll hand out a flyer. It's a, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. It's got a little QR code, if you know how to use those.
QR code.
QR code. If you already done that, done it, that's great. That's wonderful. I think that it knows when you, if, if you've done it before. So at least that's what Christian told me. Yeah, give one to Julie. You already did, but do you, do you have anybody to give it to? Oh, good, good, good.
So I, I guess what I would say, having worked, worked on inner-city planning for parking, it's probably one of the most controversial subjects you'll get involved with when you talk about number of parking spaces in front of a business. Or if you're taking parking spaces for bulbouts, at crosswalks, for safety, for pedestrians. It's, it's, it's an involved decision. The other thing is off-street parking is always the big discussion point also. Is there a location for off-street parking if you're bringing people in downtown area where they can park and that's designated? So big discussions. Good stuff.
Yeah.
Good stuff. Anything else?
Was anything happened with the ice, ice house of, was planned there in the parking lot?
You know, I don't remember seeing any in building permits, because usually I see the building permits after they. in building permits, because usually I see the building permits after they get approval.
Where is it?
This is the ice house, this is with Jim, so this would have happened right before.
The one that we were doing on Washington there by?
Yes.
Yeah, it just.
Died.
Right there. Somebody else could try to do something after that.
Yeah, I think you're right, they have like a year to, to get a building permit.
Okay.
Oh.
Cool.
And the Norpac property, that's been what?
No, um, the, oh, the partition?
Victory.
It's, it's, it's in the process of being partitioned, yes it is. And the Norpac site, they are continuing to try to lease it, so that is still happening, yeah.
Any other, any other comments for Planning Commission? If not, then I will close the hearing. Thank you. Straightforward, you're welcome, all right, have a good one, Julie. Something for me to sign? Yeah, how about that?